We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. What time is it? 7:04.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ellis, if you'd like to take attendance.
Mrs. Castle?
Here.
Mr. Hiller-Callum?
Present.
Mr. Lanacy?
Hello.
Mrs. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Strang?
Hi, um...
Okay, moving to 1.2, review of agenda and additions to the agenda. Would you like to talk, anything?
Sure, just no additions, but basically the main highlight of our evening is Mrs. Mahoney's kindergarten classes with us tonight. Thanks for being here to be recognized through our royal recognition program.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along to royal recognition. Would you like to talk about Mrs. Mahoney's class?
Sure, speaking of which, royal recognition. Once again, I want to welcome families to our January Board meeting. Thank you for being here and for being so patient. Mrs. Mahoney, I'm going to have you join me if that's okay, since you have the smart version of the technology already set up. As you know, and I know this speech is becoming a little bit more perennial, so I'll make it a little more user-friendly for our audience here, so thank you students for being here. As you know, the big thing for our Board of Education in our district is to make sure that we recognize students who have gone above and beyond, and whether that's student in athletics, academics. And one of our key focuses this year has been to do something to make sure that it's a K-8 recognition. It's not always just our oldest students who sometimes have the most opportunities. So, what's been very exciting is we've been extending that opportunity to our faculty and of course our staff and our community to say, if you see students that are kind of representing the royal recognition going above and beyond, let us know, we'd like to recognize them at a meeting. So as you might recall, last month, we had a kindergarten teacher that said, you know, hey, I'd like to recognize my students. Mrs. Sanger brought them in for a piece. And Mrs. Mahoney, actually at the same time, but we had just booked them, said, you know, actually, I was thinking about recognizing my students. And the ship's were crossing, so we should have done it at the same time, so I apologize. But really, what was so exciting is it's really great to be recognizing our earliest learners. And so, Mrs. Mahoney, I'm going to turn it over to you actually, because I thought it was really great, as much as I can kind of capture how this class really represents the mission statement and those pieces that really make us something special, Mrs. Mahoney really said it much better than I could, and you'll probably find it much more interesting too, the way she phrased it. So, Mrs. Mahoney, if I could ask you why you nominated your class, that'd be great.
Okay, so, as you know, kindergarten, there are a lot of things to learn. And the children come in, some come in knowing their letters, some come in not knowing anything. Kicking off Writer's Workshop this year really has been amazing. We're a busy classroom, anyone who's been in there has seen them and how busy they are. But as soon as I turn the music on and give them their paper, they just go. And they are quiet, and they work really hard, and we don't have to be right on top of them to get their writing done, and we're always very proud of them for it. So, even though these examples are a second draft, like a published copy, really limited help from any adults in the room, and using the word "because" already to explain why they like something in their opinion usually doesn't happen for a long time, and they do it without being prompted. So it's really an amazing success, and thanks to the parents for the support at home, because you can see, you know, we're a team and we work together, and their success is our success together. You want to do this, or do you want to do...
No, I think you please. No, actually, there's another sample, so rather than, of course, we can describe those pieces that are there, Mrs. Mahoney and of course her class really constructed a piece where we get a chance to hear, right, each of your students with a sample of what we're discussing in terms of kind of being above and beyond your physical standards. So, if we can kind of grab the lights, that'd be great, and I think we're okay with sound.
Yes, I think it'll, I've tested it, I think it works. Okay. Okay, so kindergarten opinion writing, my favorite toy by Miss Mahoney's class, 2016, 2017.
Mary, I like my Tigger because it has games like Doctor Dinosaur's Wonder World.
Katie, my favorite toy is my elephant because it is soft.
Grace, my favorite toy is my hat because it is fluffy.
Sam, I like my skateboard because it is awesome.
Ally, I like my present, my elephant, because it is fun.
Hayden, I love my dress because it is soft.
Dominique, I like my background in Wonder Woman, I like to play with them.
Grayson, I like to play on my leapfrog TV, it is fun.
Joey, I like to play my tennis league because it is fun.
Hunter, I like the Incredible Hulk.
My favorite game is Geometry Dash, it's the coolest game ever, I have it.
Ayana, I love my dog because he is a special.
I love my pot.
Jack, I like my game Skydivers because I can make my own jump.
Cameron, I like to play on my train, it makes me happy.
Fred, I love Littlest, Headshot, and Stockin because they are fun.
Liam, my favorite toy is my tablet because I like to play the game.
Logan Wilson, my favorite toy is that skateboard.
Angelina, I like to play with my dog because it is fun.
Logan, I like Sam, I like my little pumpkin so because I can play games.
Thank you for recognizing our homework.
Nicely done. Thank you, kindergartners, and thank you, Mrs. Mahoney, for assembling that, that was wonderful. You see it here, that was wonderful.
Anytime, wonderful.
That's good, okay. So, at this point, boys and girls, you've been so patient, thank you so much. Wow, thank you. What we'd like to do is we'd like to present you with certificates, so we're going to call your name, and actually, board members, if you don't mind, we'll keep with our tradition of the high-five perhaps for the kindergarten. And it says, "For exceeding your reading and writing expectations for the first half of the 16th, 17th school year." So again, it's pretty exciting because we're only in January, and if you look at what we've done, imagine we'll be in June. So nice job, boys and girls. Thank you, Mrs. Mahoney, thank you, parents.
If I could interject, their reading was beautiful as well, nobody helped them, they did it on their own. They can read back what they write, and that's very important.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Okay, now you're on, okay, so please, so Mrs. Mahoney's going to present our certificate students, as you hear your name, we could ask you to come up here, walk through, give us a high-five, that'd be great, and we're going to ask you if you don't mind to stay standing over here so we can take a nice picture for you for the website and for Twitter.
Hi, Alex Babannick.
There we go.
Does it want for me? Congratulations, I'm so proud of you, keep working hard. Ally Hannigan. We'll have Ally, we'll record night for tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Angelina, not here, right? Okay. Bryn Wood. Oh, go to me first. Ah.
Excuse me, we didn't rehearse this one, sorry.
Congratulations. Wait, I was so proud of you, keep working hard. High five, okay. All right, thank you.
Nice job.
Next up, Cameron Maher. Congratulations. There you go, keep working hard, buddy, okay?
I love that you dressed for the...
Okay, Delaney O'Whacklin. Good job, congratulations, working hard.
Nice work.
Grace Levine. Grace, she's working hard, girl. Grayson Urbannick. Great job, buddy, keep working hard, okay?
Solid.
Hayden Saltis. Great job, so proud of your hard work, keep it up. Hunter is not here. Okay, Ayana Garcia. Good job, Jack, keep working hard.
Now you're just fascinated, that's fast, dude.
Great job, all dressed in our school colors.
Good work.
Logan Shepherd, I did not see either. Logan Wilson? No? I know you're here. You're close, Sam, you're close. Madeline Walsh. Awesome job, you both agree for, okay?
Nice work.
And last but certainly not least, Sam Ryan.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahoney's class. Now, boys and girls, before, and families, thank you for coming out, by the way, I know it's a little, it's late, and of course it could be called out, thank you for coming out. So if I could ask you, before we proceed, boys and girls, we have you all up here, I think everybody's in this area, right? Perfect. We'll grab a photo, see if we can get you all in. Yeah, of course, we go all the way down towards the door, that'd be great. All the way down, we'll hold our certificates.
I don't need to be in there.
All right, let's see. Perfect, okay, we're going to hold our certificates, not over our faces, but over our bellies.
Stand for the pledge.
Perfect. Nicely done, boys and girls, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Miss Mahoney, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for having us. Hopefully your hands aren't too sore.
Is that okay?
Yes. I tried to count low, sorry.
That was good, yes, it was here, actually. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming out.
Hi. Oh, okay, sorry, drop me a student chair.
Tomorrow.
How you feeling?
Good.
So lucky to have you.
All these open seats. Fine, okay.
How about that parent involved?
Really, that's just great.
All right, we will move right along to 1.4, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. We have December 15, 2016. Somebody would like to make a motion? A second. All those in favor? All right. One point five, acceptance of financial reports. We have three this month, the Internal Claims Auditor's Report from December 2016, the Monthly Treasurer's Report with budget transfers, and the Extra Classroom Orderly Report. Somebody to make a motion?
A motion.
And a second. Any questions, comments? No? Okay, all those in favor? All those against? 1.6, building use. Looks like we have three groups, NYSPTA, Twin Town Little League, and Empire Night Halls. Somebody like to make a motion?
A motion.
Second? Second. Any discussion or questions?
We switched Twin Town to the Class 2, which is still the $40 an hour.
Okay, all those in favor? Yes, all those against?
I have a small question.
Can we talk public comment? It's next.
Well, it pertains right to here, for, I think there's an error in here. 7 to 4 p.m. on the Twin Town, what's that mean?
7 a.m.
It's from 7 a.m. to 4 p.m.
So it's morning till, it should be an a.m. in there.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear.
Okay, moving on to Communications, 1.7, communications to the Board. Communications to the Board. I didn't receive anything, did I?
I did not.
No? Okay, and the opportunity for the public to be heard, so anybody...
I have Carl on the list.
Hi, Carl.
Hi.
You're Kyle.
Few minors, well, that's... Have the budget workshop started yet?
They will begin, I'm so sorry, they will begin in February, actually. We'll start with our first budget workshop will be the 16th, early. And any materials will be posted online as well, so anything, once we have that meeting, we'll make sure we post everything we have.
Next is, talked about at the last meeting, the Veterans Day Ban. Anybody know how that's coming along?
Can I respond? Oh, okay, they're gonna, they haven't met yet, but they're going to contact me when they do.
Who hasn't met yet?
The, whoever's getting together with the town.
The Parade Committee?
Yes, the Parade Committee, I guess is what you call it. They haven't met yet, and when they do, they're going to contact me.
And on to pre-K. Questions about pre-K, I'm wondering how far along this thing is.
Well, it hasn't started yet, we're going to have our first meeting January 26, yes.
Open to the public?
Open to the public, yes, we had solicited people that through the social media and website, if anyone interested in joining, we'll be meeting Thursday, 6:30, 8:00, to kind of brainstorm questions, because actually, a large portion of that, I was going to actually talk about in my board report, is basically to kind of, because pre-K was put on the agenda a few years ago, and then not really, we're kind of returning to it in a couple years, what are community questions, concerns, things that we want to research, things like that, so it's kind of like an open discussion slash think tank.
I have a few questions, but you want to hear them now, or should I read?
Whatever, whatever works for.
I'll say it now, just in case. The, one of the things that needs to be, and I think I mentioned this before, is liability, i.e.
Transportation, yeah.
Transportation. Now, going along with that, you got drivers, and because of age and the size of the kids, will there be an assistance required on the bus?
We haven't, you know, we haven't had any meetings yet, but these are good things for us to talk about.
This is actually good, because these are all questions I'll bring back to that group, actually.
The next, the next thing is, why do we have to provide transportation? Why can't the parents bring the kid here?
Yeah, it's all, it's all stuff we're going to talk about, we don't, you know...
And just so you can tell, and I'll tell you, I'm against it, period. But never mind, I'm just one vote. I think it's babysitting services, and anybody else wants to say it's not, that's fine. But, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, moving on to 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. 2.1, Board of Education Reports and Updates. I don't know that we have any reports to report out. You did go to the, no, that's upcoming, never mind.
I'm calling you, I'm calling you. I look forward to reporting.
The Bozies.
Yes, at March, Kathy, I think you're going as well, right? In March, the 23rd?
Okay, 2.2, District Superintendent Program Report. Looks like you have Capitol Project Report update on there?
Sure, just a few little things, and also some budget pieces as well. Dr. Yost and I were discussing today, she'll discuss kind of the building pieces, the building level pieces that have happened since our meeting, which we figure was at 12 school days since our last board meeting, so it's interesting how much has happened in 12 school days since our last December meeting. So Dr. Yost will kind of cover the building level piece. So three major exciting things, I should say, hot topics, the Capitol Project, we are still waiting, we're pretty close, we were told by CS Arch, our project manager slash architect, that we'd have approval as of last Friday, I think that was still being held up at state aid, so it's nothing the architect or the manager's done, but our approval of the actual building, the building itself, is still held up in kind of the queue of state aid. So we're hoping that it's any day now, because it was due obviously last Friday, but we're hoping with that we'll come the approval, in which case it'll go out to bid, and in which case we'll wait for the bids to come in, with still the intent of breaking ground in the spring, so breaking ground for the new physical part of the building in the spring, of course, that date to be determined, and actually each day that we're waiting to approve does make that date fluctuate. But of course, when we have that information, as soon as approved, the community will know and the board will know as well. Going along with that, the budget, as you might be aware, through some of the media pieces, the governor did release his executive budget, two pieces, so as of last evening, I did provide the board with a rough copy. As you know, this is kind of a game, it starts, you know, the governor releases the budget, the legislator gets a hold of it, it kind of goes back and forth, this is where some of the advocacy kind of comes into play, but so of course, the initial state aid runs, if you will, are released. So just to kind of give you a little bit of a soundbite, because as you can imagine, when we get these sheets of paper, they can be a little bit misleading, you'll notice, or actually, many schools, well, some in Rensselaer County, but of course, these are statewide, you'll see that Wine and Skill at this moment is projected to receive an increase of, and this is again, at this moment, of about $21,000 in foundation aid, so that'd be an increase of between budget years, $21,000 in foundation aid. But you'll also notice, which could be kind of a little bit ominous, okay, a negative $214,171 in overall state aid. So when we see that number, and then we see a negative, that of course causes us to say, oh my God, what's going on? Just to explain that a little bit, that is basically a result of, as you're aware, we did do a building and construction project about 15 years ago, Phase 1 and Phase 2, so we were receiving building aid on that project, it does end, this is the 15th year since that project, so the amount of aid was reduced this, for this coming year, the 17, 18 year, however, that's balanced with our expenditure to the debt service also decreases. So if that makes sense, so as much as that's a decrease, if you were to soundbite and say, oh my God, why didn't Skill lost that aid, what's going on, what did they do, did they not submit something, that's not the case at all. This was projected, of course, by fiscal advisors, this would happen, so that's why, of course, we're very fiscally conservative and always put away towards the capital fund, our capital reserve, to make sure that we're set, but also, our payment out to the debt service reduces as well. So again, as much as that looks ominous to see, that figure of what we pay out each year to the debt service is reduced as well. So again, that does provide us a little bit of balance, but at this point, these are numbers that are still in flux, but just want to kind of explain that, so if you were to pull the runs offline and say, oh, you know, why is Wine and Skill in the negative, but another one's in the positive, they most likely are still in their Capitol Project A receipt. So we were just finishing up our project from about 2001 or '02, in which case, there was some infrastructure pieces, I think this actual, the library was part of that at this point? So this is obviously, I think, the 15th year since the library and the infrastructure pieces inside, and of course, we're waiting for other numbers. This is as of last night, and we'll of course see what happens with the legislator, and when, of course, they do the dance back and forth between the executive and legislative branch. And last but not least, so of course, as those updates come about, as you can see, this is kind of a moving shell game, that's why February's a perfect point, because at that point, we'll at least have some firm numbers, if this stays the same, or if there's more, or other pieces added, then we'll at least give you our projections based on fixed costs, and of course, what we're looking at for the next school year. Just another piece to look at, as you know, we did have a two-hour delay on Wednesday, so as we are in the Northeast, this is, we've got a pretty solid winter so far, so we've had one snow day, and of course, one two-hour delay. One of the pieces the district elected to do was to switch over to using a text message notification system, that was because we were doing, we start this process, Bonnie, myself, and the other superintendents, at about 4:05, 4:10 in the morning, of kind of going back and forth, and we were finding families because of the fact that, you know, besides the media, you know, we've sent it right out to the news stations, the radio stations, now that, since, you know, technology's changed in the past 20 years, we've added social media, Twitter, Facebook, my account, the district account, families were saying, actually overwhelmingly, okay, between the news stations, Twitter, Facebook, the text messages that some of these services offer, we're getting a lot of information at the same time, and we're getting that 4:30 phone call that's ringing on our cellphone and our home phone, and of course, if you don't answer, it rings until you answer, we get it, we know it's coming, it's the Northeast, we know the weather's getting, you know, we know the night before usually, when it's kind of looking like it's going to be kind of glum, so, you know, can we do with the phone call, it's kind of becoming more cumbersome. And actually, also, we were finding that the calls are being ignored, we look at the reports, which isn't good, because that is an emergency system, that is to be used actually for an emergency, if people are ignoring it because they're becoming immune, then it's not serving its purpose. So what we decided to do, and actually, we'll make sure to communicate that better, was we switched over to a text message system, though parents have to opt in, or families, it's basically a very simple process, they do have to opt in, so the system knows to dial that number for a text. It does eliminate us from kind of that repetitive calling, when it's like, well, we knew the delay was coming because, for three days, we've been talking about a storm. We will be doing the calls, but we'll be reserving the phone calls for what I would say emergencies, which once again, that could be anything from tomorrow, it's 50 degrees, and we're out of power, to what I would call an unexpected closing. If people are ignoring it because they're becoming immune, then it's not serving its purpose. So what we decided to do, and actually we'll make sure to communicate that better, was we switched over to a text message system. Though parents have to opt in, or families, it's basically a very simple process, they do have to opt in, so the system knows to dial that number for a text. It does eliminate us from kind of that repetitive calling when it's like, well, we knew the delay was coming because, for three days we've been talking about a storm. We will be doing the calls, but we'll be reserving the phone calls for what I would say emergencies, which once again, that could be anything from tomorrow, it's 50 degrees and we're out of power, to what I would call an unexpected closing. You know, for some reason, wine and skill is hit with a storm, our surrounding areas are fine, no one sees it coming. We would do the robo-call, because that would be something we want to make sure people have. But since this past snow day was kind of, or snow delay was rather predicted, since we were talking about the inclement weather as of last Friday, and also we dismissed earlier the day before, we felt the phone call was kind of a, a chance to kind of reinvent, use the text, because people were finding overwhelmingly a little bit frustrating to get so many pieces of data in addition to the regular news stations that's still offered, as they have for the past few years. So again, we'll be communicating that message out there. Any questions, of course, let us know, but just, we do highly encourage any one interested to receive that text notification, if you're not getting it from somewhere else, to visit our website, or Facebook, or Twitter, and the directions are very simple. It takes about 15 seconds, I think, to actually opt in. That's been our excitement.
I think too, if anybody was really unsure, they could call the school. The voicemail message says that school's closed tonight.
Absolutely, we, we, thank you. Yes, so we always try to make sure there's multi-pieces, including the voicemail, that says, you know, we are on a two-hour delay, or we're closed, and so that's there. So again, we are sorry for any inconvenience that might have caused, but also, we were kind of listening to the overwhelming, as Mrs. Sillis can attest to, the overwhelming messages that varied in politeness of, you know, of getting the 4:45 phone call, their cellphone, their home phone, their spouse's cellphone, and okay, and then if we don't answer, it's ringing in, it woke up children. So we were being responsive to the kind of that, that piece.
We appreciate that.
We get that call, and we expect it as board members, but I think the population at large doesn't expect it. To get a call at 4:30 or 4:45.
It's exciting.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
2.3, Principals Report.
So, as Dr. Rudin said, it's our 12-day school since we've been back. And boy, those 12 days, it's been a week. We are almost at the point where we ran every child through our NWEA computerized math and ELA testing, which is a big hall, there's 363 students now. And Stephanie Carbone has worked her magic to get all the computers up and running and to even have our little skies clicking around with the mouse. And so this is a time, again, as soon as they came off, you know, the bus from break refreshed, we're ready to start looking at January data to look at those scores and to see the growth measure if we're on target. We'll be finishing, also, Fontes and Pennell Oral Reading Testing has been taking place for students in K-6, where they're reading with their teacher one-on-one. So there's been a lot of substitute teachers in the building, giving those teachers that ability to read one-on-one and really see where their students are and take all that collective data. Some, you know, most times it takes about an hour for a teacher to read and look at the progress there. So we have a lot of good data that we're collecting, and 12 days to think that we've run the whole school through this system is incredible. So again, a big kudos to Stephanie Carbone. We will be done by the first week of February, so we have data review teams, where we'll be pulling teachers out for a half hour each, a half hour to an hour, where we're sitting and reviewing each child one by one to look at their growth points on NWA and FNP to see, you know, where, if we need to add more supports, or more enrichment, or every student. So we're going to use two days, February, I think we're slotted for second and third to do that. And then I know Steph Carbone will be in here next, you know, meeting to present the results of all this data that we've collected.
She's already booked, by the way. It should be out February, Jenna.
We also had our third annual JV Spelling Bee. Our winner, it was a 3'8" spelling bee, our winner was Ryan Bates, a fifth grader. So that was really good to see a fifth grader beat those middle schoolers, they're still talking about it. Thank you to Sam Swart for organizing the spelling bee, along with Amy Murphy, Sarah Sepp, Andrew Newmark for facilitating and judging. Great turnout. Thank you to Meredith Gavin and Sue Schuback for getting that little spelling group going so that the kids get used to the format and have, you know, have fun with getting that and getting ready for the big spelling bee. So that was very exciting. Next month, Ryan will go on to Proctors and see how he does against the Capitol region. The Science Club started up again, so each Monday until the 1st of April, we have a Science Club. The Children's Museum is here with quite a few students. Quite a few. It was a great turnout, they're doing a great job, they bring everything. And we're gonna run that through until April, because there was so much interest in the Science Club. So a thank you to Lisa Steenberg for organizing that, and many parents that helped out at that event, which is great. Yesterday, we had a faculty meeting, a K-8 faculty meeting. We had Dr. Verweis, who is a parent of a fourth grader and a seventh grader, came and offered his, fifth grader, sorry, Laura, she's in fifth grade. Laura is a fifth grader and David is a seventh grader. He is a professor at RPI. He had come to one of our principal chats, where we talk about assessments and the need to create a culture for assessment. He's spent the last 10 years at RPI working on projects to tighten the assessment protocols at RPI. He brought that here to really talk, not specifically grade level, but just how each teacher can continuously look at their activities, their resources, and really making sure that everything we do with our kids are aligned to those student outcomes. What are we looking for at the end of the year? And, you know, is it something that is fully aligned? How do our assessments keep track of, you know, to make sure that every minute, you know, we're working toward that same goal? So he did a wonderful presentation for our faculty, which really came out of a principal chat, that, you know, it's just great ideas from parents and tapping into those resources from parents. I think it's just been great. It's been a great year, we've had great volunteers, and that was just another wonderful, I think, experience for everyone. This week, we also had a artist slash illustrator come in. Marika Makula is an artist illustrator on graphic novels, which is now the new craze, you know, which to me looks like a comic book. I always say to the kids, are you reading a comic book? It's a graphic organizer, Mrs. Yoder's. This is the way we read. Lots of pictures, lots of excitement. Graphic novel. So Mrs. Delaney, our ELA teacher, worked with the eighth graders along with our art teacher, Mrs. Mitchell, and the kids are creating their own stories and illustrations. So she did an in-house residency through the day, and then the kids are gonna continue this project. So it's a...
Just the eighth grade?
Just the eighth grade, we had the eighth graders. So that was this week. Student teachers started, we have a new group of student teachers from Sage. We have Ally Roser working in third grade with Mrs. Curran, Darcy Kidder Love working in third grade with Mrs. Kinley, Erin Kelly working in sixth grade with Mrs. Swart. So that started on Tuesday, they're here for the next semester. And just as I was thinking about Sage, I don't know if I told you last month, but Russell Sage held an ELA slash social studies course all the first semester here. 12 students and a professor worked here in the library, and first thing in the morning for about a half hour or so. And then 12 students went into the K-2 classrooms and assisted in literacy centers, writing. It was a great experience, it's something we tried. They would read to the students as soon as they came in for 8:00 to 8:15, and it was a great experience. So that just wrapped up in December, but the, the teachers loved it, welcomed, you know, more adults in the room, listening, helping, reading, writing, and doing all that. So it was a great experience. So we welcomed our new student teachers from Sage. And then lastly, we had our High School Choice, which was another great turnout, having the five representatives, guidance counselors, principals from our school districts coming in here and answering questions. And some of our parents were here, but it was a nice event. So thank you to Amy Murphy for organizing that. And the kids have some hard decisions to make, and, but, you know, they, they get a lot of information out there and at least set them up to where they're gonna visit next. So, that was great. Busy 12 days.
Thank you, Dr. Yoder.
Thank you.
2.4, Principals Report. I never received one, I don't see anybody here. PTR report, I'm sorry. PTR report. I don't see somebody from PTR.
I know their meeting got canceled Tuesday evening because of the weather. It was rescheduled?
For Tuesday.
This next Tuesday?
Okay.
2.4.
Okay, moving on, 3.0, Appointments and Authorizations. We're gonna do 3.1 through 3.4 as a consent agenda, unless somebody has an objective or objection. Anybody does? Okay. 3.1, approve the CSE/CPSE recommendations as per attached. 3.2, resolve that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the Board President to enter into an amended employment contract with the superintendent, effective July 1st, 2017, in a form substantially similar to the draft provided by the school attorney, which amends and continues existing employment contract dated June 18th, 2015. 3.3, approval of substitutes. Substitute non-certified teacher, teacher's aid at $70 per day. We have Jennifer Parrot, or Parrot, Meredith Gavin, Kendra Gross, Brandon Crozier, and Nicholas...
Or Apollo.
Or Apollo. Then for substitute certified teacher, $90 per day. Shannon Wilbur. And substitute food service worker, recess slash cafe aide, $9.70 per hour. Jennifer Parrot and Meredith Gavin. And then 3.4, accept a $200 donation from Paolo Lombardi's Restaurant.
A motion?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hurakawa? Mr. Lancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
4.0, Old Business, don't have anything going over. 5.0, New Business. It's mostly informational. Questar Annual Meeting, Wednesday, April 5th, 2017, at 5:00 PM. And B, Questar Annual Budget Vote, Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. And then C, Staff Members, Children Attending Gardner-Dickinson. For the budget vote, do we have to actually come in that day to vote?
You read my mind, actually.
You know, in the past, we've actually had like a 7:00 or 7:30 meeting, come in, vote, and then go home.
Don't you remember last year, we did it first thing in the morning, and I couldn't get in the door, and you guys were walking out that door as I was walking down the hallway? So I missed the vote, even though I was here at 7:00 AM.
It's that quick.
That rings a bell, actually, now that you say that.
In the morning.
It doesn't have to be that early, we just do it, so it's done and over with.
We need three board members to attend to make it a question.
I was gonna say, just, just throw out there, because it really is kind of sometimes, for the most part, pro forma. If you wanted to maybe take, it could be any time, but also, if you did want to do it before work, it just has to be three people.
It has to be on that day.
It does have to be on that day. It has to be before, I think, before 9:00 PM is probably when they close the polls, if you will. But really, we could certainly, it doesn't have to be the whole board, three would be fine.
I have to be there 4:07.
Oh, it's true, yeah, that's true.
Usually driving by, that's all.
That would help.
It takes about three, four minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's quick.
That's mine, 7:30.
So if you, I mean, whatever, it can do it afterwards. It can do it.
Whatever's good for...
Whatever works for all of you.
Just keep the door open for me.
I'll be at the...
7:00 AM.
On the 25th? On the 25th?
7:00 AM, is that?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the 5th, would anybody like a reservation to go to the annual meeting? Because they do serve food and stuff, they like a head count.
This one here, she's asking if anyone wants to go to the annual meeting. Do we have time to decide?
Do you go, Dr. Yoder?
I usually go, however, I believe this does coincide with Washington DC this year, so I will be on the road. But normally I do, yes. It's a nice meeting, the meal's prepared by the Questar.
Is it right at Questar?
Yes.
Okay.
The reservation was due?
It's due next month, I believe. We have some time.
Think about it, you know, if anyone wants to, I would love to go with you.
I should be able to. So I'll let you know.
I'll order dinner.
I'll let you know for sure, but I shouldn't be babysitting by that point, so I should be able to get out at that time.
And then letter C, Staff Members, Children Attending Gardner-Dickinson. I would just say that, well, I've been doing this for a couple of years now. And ever since I've started, nobody's ever actually come to me and said, I wish we could do this. But I have heard that staff members did wish that they could bring their children to our school. They value our school. So we're gonna, we're gonna look at it. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything?
Just that, you know, I've heard the same desire and other school districts, most school districts do allow that. And so I kind of would like to be, you know, along, go along with what, you know, the other school districts are offering, because it is, or would be considered a benefit. And I think that staff members would be more vested. You know, in the school, they wouldn't have to take so many days off or feel so many conflicts with their, you know, personal lives and having their kids here.
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have our Policy Committee look at it, try to write up a policy that is fair and equitable to all parties. So, if anybody has anything?
I was just gonna ask, what's perfect timing for this conversation is this, as you know, the Policy Committee, we are meeting, we're scheduled to meet this coming Wednesday, and we're doing the 4,000 series, and this, the policy pertaining to non-resident tuition, or non-resident students tuition or non-tuition base, is in the 5,000 series. So that will be arriving to us probably in the next couple of weeks, so it will be perfect timing. So when that, that policy will flow through the Policy Committee first, which does have two seated board members, and then at which point it will be brought to the board table for discussions. So obviously, there's a few different avenues the Policy Committee could go with the recommendations, but the board will ultimately have the final say.
Okay. Good. 6.0, Informational. Our next regular meeting will be February 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. 6.2, Opportunity for the Public to Be Heard. Again, anybody signed up for this session? Okay. You're up again, Carl.
What? Tea was tough. I see the contract with the superintendent. Not having read and seen the original, my question is, why? And any money or time involved above and beyond the initial contract?
So what we're going to be negotiating is the, an extension. So, the way the...
I prefer a figure rather than an extension. One year, two years, three years?
Well, we're gonna negotiate that, but it, by law, we have to have a superintendent for between three and five years. The way our current contract reads, we're getting near the end of that third year. Next year would be the end of that third year, so we're just negotiating that now. So, I guess once we know, we, once we've negotiated that, it'll...
Will the public be notified of changes before it's signed?
No.
Why not? I have a right to know that, it's money.
Before it's signed? Well...
We have to know what the offer is. You can't just say, I spent $1,000,000, and tell me, the public, the taxpayer, oh, we spent your money. You didn't have to know that.
Well, I guess that's what we're telling you, is that we're gonna negotiate it. As soon as we've negotiated it, we'll let you know.
Negotiate means it hasn't been signed?
It has not been signed yet.
Okay, so we'll know that before it's signed?
Maybe, I don't know if we'll have a meeting before it's signed, another meeting, you know, we could sign it before the next meeting.
I'm not too sure that's legal. No, better check.
Okay.
And my next question, or statement, Staff Members, Children Attending Gardner-Dickinson. My answer to that is, if they want to, that's nice, as long as they pay tuition or have a substantial reduction in the base pay. Why should I pay for somebody else's kids?
Well, I think that's one of the things that the Policy Committee will look at. They'll look at policies that other, other school districts use, and just kind of decide what other places use and see what's good for us. You know, honestly, if, if there's one additional student in, in the class, I don't know that, that really, you know, changes anything for that class.
But there's gotta be money spent somewhere.
I, I would imagine, yes, that, I wouldn't say that it's a zero cost, but, you know, if, if we have to decide between, you know, a teacher who has to take days off so that they can attend their own child's events at their own school... they can attend their own child's events at their own school...
That's fine.
You know, we're paying for a substitute.
That's fine. Let them do it.
We get state aid based on enrollment. It would make our state aid a greater number when you have higher enrollment.
But it may not be worth it for a child.
It is a win situation.
Yes, but the policy committee will look at it, and we'll decide from there. We haven't decided anything yet, but we're going to look at it.
But what it's worth, there's also a few models out there too, of districts that, you know, have some samples to look at that the board will have an opportunity to consider, and the policy committee, on how to, you know, how to structure that, how to make all, kind of answer all those pieces.
Anybody else?
When you guys do, like, the NWEA testing, can you send out in your last email, like, include that you're doing the testing? Because it's not, it wasn't told to us that you guys were doing that. And like, as a parent, I want to know that Liam's being tested because it impacts him, like, at the end of the day, that he, his, his schedule was disrupted. And I just think it's fair for parents to know when their kids are being tested, and if they have questions about the NWEA, they can contact you. I feel like that's a kind of a simple thing. And I know, like, before, we've asked if a schedule would be posted online when the testing was. If, you know, if, I don't know when it's decided, but for us to be able to look at a calendar and know that the NWEA testing, just like the state testing, is listed, if that could be done. That's all I have.
I just had one, not a big deal. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year, glad to be back. I have to say that in my job, special education, the leap back from a holiday is often rough on some kids. And there were moments, like that first week, you know, a day or two coming back, but it was pretty smooth, I have to say, overall. And the kids jumped right back in. And then when you do say, as we did, we went right into NWE testing, I felt that they felt prepared and calm for it. I was just happy that the school environment, the school climate was very sensitive to the kids during testing, and I was proud of that. So just wanted to say that.
Are you just saying hi?
Happy new year. Just loved the texting. I think that, I don't have Facebook or Twitter, so the texting for me, it was awesome. Actually, I got, before Darcy, and we were texting, she was like, I didn't get any.
I forgot to sign up.
So...
Remember that one of the perks is you always get the first call.
There we go. But I loved the texting. It really, I thought it was awesome. Another thing that I was wondering, now that you, the eighth grader are looking into high school, any chance that can open up for seventh graders? So to give them a chance of, in parents, to what look up for next year?
Actually, that's a great point. We did this on a different scale going along, that we did discuss, as you might have been where the board, I know it was where this, the eighth graders did take a trip in early October. We did speak to Tech Valley about doing something at the end of the year for seventh graders to kind of start that conversation, so it becomes a little more relevant of, here's a Tech Valley piece, which is probably the most unique out of our five schools, doing something with seventh graders, they have a chance to kind of see what's out there before they hit eighth grade, and then kind of starting those conversations in the classroom with the counselor, and then also getting information to parents too of, okay, here's one of the five choices, let's start that conversation now. So absolutely, that is something we are looking at.
Because I know that a lot of the parents are already talking and seeing, and, and some of them went to Troy, and some of them went to Evo Park, and some of them went to Columbia, and they're like, but I don't know how they are now. That was 20, 25 years ago when we graduated and everything's changed. Do I like my kid to go to the same high school that I went? Yes, but then I don't know how the environment and how it, things are, you know, with change. So, and, you know, and the kids are kind of, oh, I'm looking forward to go to that school, but then, you know, kids talking. So, but they are talking about already where they wanted to go and why, why they think they wanted to go to that school. But I think that will alleviate more the pressure and open the eyes and perspective of kids and parents by, you know, you know, half is going to be here tomorrow.
That high school day that the eighth graders do, that would be a good thing that seventh graders could go to as well.
Sure.
They can walk around, get the info, if parents want to come, parents can come. Get an idea about, I don't know, I just think you could open it up to seventh graders.
Great idea. Not a hard thing to do.
Do we have a parent night coming up for High School Choice? Was there, or no? That was just, you just had last week?
Just last, right. And then there's that, the eighth graders have a chance to visit their top choice in a March date, to be determined, it's still being worked out with some of the counselors.
And there's a parent night at all the high schools. So Columbia's this February 14th.
Oh, okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Troy High, this is March 9th, I forget the other ones.
Which I like, because you get to go to your grade.
And we've been talking about it for nine years.
Yes. Right. So have we.
So tired of it.
But I think tying the seventh grade into it is a great idea, into the decision-making, and especially, sorry to use the Tech Valley piece again, but because that is the most unfamiliar piece, I think starting with that is kind of a springboard in the later part of the year of, okay, this is one option, now let's start talking about your other options. But I think adding that group to the, maybe the second part of the high school fair in the, you know, that we just had would be great for seventh grade in the future.
Do you have anybody interested in Tech Valley yet?
Yeah, actually, we've had a few.
Really?
And candidates that I will attribute that visit, I don't think, had we not taken that, that visit, would have ruled it out based on what they perceive it to be, or what they thought it would look like. So I think that does help. And I think those that have expressed an interest, they do have to apply...
Yeah.
And meet with the counselor, I think are making an informed decision rather than just, I should go here because of X, Y, or Z, or what I've heard about it, so.
That's been good.
Good question.